All right. Welcome to the Planning Commission. It's time to call the meeting to order. At 7:00 PM, May 29th. We did reschedule the meeting from Monday to today, so it was a little bit of a reschedule. And the first thing on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of April 22nd, 2019. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion carries.
But we've all done it. I just wanted to, I just wanted to note that the members present, we had a chairperson change, so it should say Chairperson Holberg. That was it.
Okay. So back again, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is we have an opportunity for the citizens here to address the commission about anything that's not currently on the agenda. So if you would like to speak, we are going to open the public hearing right now for anything that is not on the current agenda. So the public hearing right now is open. Anybody here to speak on that? Anything on the agenda? All right, well, I guess it is time to close that public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Chair, Chair Holberg, it's actually not, it's not a public hearing, it's just an opportunity for citizens to speak. You don't have to formally open or close a public hearing.
So it is, we are done with that. Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved, the motion carries. Alrighty. The next thing up is a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant at 7120 Chicago Avenue. Staff?
Thank you Chair Holberg, members of the Planning Commission. Reggae Foods, the applicant, is proposing to open a takeout-only Jamaican restaurant in a multi-tenant building at 7120 Chicago Avenue. Takeout-only restaurants are a conditionally permitted use in the neighborhood business district or C1 district. The applicant is proposing to occupy 635 square feet of the property. This space was previously occupied by Roy's Barber Shop. The remaining square footage is occupied by Galaxy Foods. The proposed use meets all of the required conditions for the C1 district, which include occupying less than 2,000 square feet, not having a drive-up window, and not serving alcohol. The property also meets parking requirements, and the applicant intends to install order control due to the building's proximity to residential. The applicant is required to stripe the parking lot in accordance with the site plan, add parking lot screening in the boulevard, and install gates on the traction closure. No variances are required. A full discussion of conditional use permit requirements can be found in an attachment to this report. Finding that the proposal meets requirements, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. And I believe the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Having an enclosure, the odor mitigation, things of that nature. I'm just, maybe you can just clarify or help me understand when it becomes the applicant's responsibility to do landscaping versus the property owners?
Yeah, that's something that can be worked out between the applicant and the property owner, if they want to work on it jointly, or, you know.
Okay. I mean, as long as the applicants have no objection to that, and I don't have any objection to it, it's just, again, something that, as I was reading through the stipulations, I...
All right, so no questions? Do we open it up for a public hearing at this point? For anybody else in the room who might have some questions? All right, if you have questions for the applicant, you can come on up to the podium, you have three minutes, and just state your name and address and speak into, and sign in up there as well.
Can you hear me? My name is James Swanson, I own the building next door, 7108. And my question is, what is the expected hours of operation?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, why don't you walk up to the podium, thank you. And just introduce yourself and sign in up there as well.
Good evening, my name is Veronica Bradbury. The opening hours for the restaurant will be from 12 noon until 8:00 PM.
Well, I just have, do we have anything else? Do we, is it, should we close the public hearing? Is it the right time? Okay, that's all I'm asking. So would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing for the conditional use permit is now closed. And now, should we open a time for staff report, or staff recommending?
Now that the public hearing is closed, this would be the time to ask for a motion on the item, if there are no further questions from the commission.
Any further questions?
No, I think just in general, I'm very excited to see this happening, and I think my only questions were about order control, and it sounds like we're ahead of that, so good luck to you guys, and hope it works out if this goes through. Thank you.
Yeah, good luck, I'm excited. I don't think we have a Jamaican restaurant in Richfield right now, so that's amazing. All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant at 7120 Chicago Avenue.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Discussion, okay.
Aye.
Did you have something that you wanted to?
Yeah, we normally have discussion after the motion, if possible, before we vote, right?
Okay.
But I guess I just had a question for staff. What is the, what are the guidelines for hours on, in a C1 district? I mean, they're saying what their hours are going to be, but there must be guidelines, I think I've seen them before.
The C1 district doesn't, it does not include any guidelines on hours, kind of hardwired into the zoning district. I think by the nature of the very, in the, in the C1 neighborhood commercial district, the, the types of commercial uses are so limited in that it tends not to, I think just in, by default, it tends not to attract businesses that are open late. Typical, since, you know, you can't have a restaurant with any alcohol service, you can't have a gas station, it just doesn't tend, the C1 district doesn't tend to have businesses like that, that would have late-night hours, and therefore, that's probably why it's not kind of hardwired in there.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. So let's just do the vote one more time. So Jim, you made the motion?
Yes.
And all in favor, and we had a second. I was just redoing it again, since we had stopped for the discussion. So why don't we just reread the motion again?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant at 7120 Chicago Avenue.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Great, congratulations. All right, the next thing we have in the agenda is a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit to allow a school at 7132 Portland Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. Hope Presbyterian Church, the applicant, is requesting approval of a conditional use permit in order to allow a public school to operate within a portion of their building at 7132 Portland Avenue. This site is located in the single-family residential district, and public schools are conditionally permitted use in this district. The applicant is proposing to house Richfield School District, Richfield College Experience Program, or RCEP, in a portion of their school building. RCEP is a partnership between Richfield School District and Normandale Community College that supports students ages 16 to 21 with the desire and motivation to graduate from high school and achieve success in college. The applicant is working on a long-term lease with the Richfield School District to accommodate RCEP. The applicant has been granted conditional use permits for similar uses dating back to 1972, with certain amendments to accommodate more children. Currently, this facility has conditional use permits for programs such as a Montessori school, an adult daycare, a preschool, and after-school programs. The RCEP proposes to occupy approximately 10,000 square feet of the building indicated on the site plan. Currently, there are 70 students enrolled in RCEP with eight staff members, and enrollment is permitted to expand up to 100 students. Due to the age of the students, parking need was calculated based on the requirements for a trade school, and available parking exceeds what is required. Hours of operation will be from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. A full discussion of conditional use permit requirements can be found in an attachment to this report. Finding that the proposal meets requirements, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. And I believe we have both the applicant and a member of the program here.
Okay, great, well, let's open up the public hearing. So if we have folks in the room who would like to speak, just go on up to your podium, sign in with your name and introduce yourself, and you've got, each person has three minutes to talk. Thank you.
All right, I'll sign in after I talk, but my name's Patrick, I live on Clinton Avenue, and I have children at the Montessori school, and first off, I want to say that the program itself, the RCEP, I have nothing against that program, I think it's great. However, I don't think the Hope Church is the place for it. It has already seemed to be a bit overcrowded, and I'm a little disappointed, first of all, that the church did not notify us parents sooner about this plan, that's apparently taking place in June. And there is already, you know, the Young Life Program there on Mondays and Thursday nights. Our day, our daycares being essentially uprooted and moved to the other side of the building. I'm not even sure that, I've never seen the classrooms on that side of the building, but I have extreme doubts that it's going to suffice to take all of our current Montessori school and move it over. I don't think it's very feasible. I also have security concerns with a number of people ages 16 to 21 coming through. If you said there's 70 of them, that is a lot, especially with eight staff members, that to me is concerning. And then I am also disappointed, because I feel like this sends a pretty wrong message to, to uproot Montessori school like this, that Richfield doesn't care about early childhood education, and that's really disappointing as well. And, you know, to me, it seems like this is, this was communicated very poorly, doesn't seem very well planned out, and to be honest, I'm not sure why they would want the program to go there. I know that, I've looked at the website, and they're currently at Normandale. I don't know if they're out of space, but the classrooms at Hope are meant for elementary school children, they're very small. I, I wouldn't want, I mean, as an adult, I mean, I think it's kind of confining. So, yeah, there's just a number of issues, there's security concerns, you know, with, we're losing a whole hallway and an entrance, and I just, I don't feel like it's being managed or communicated very well at all.
Thank you, I appreciate that input. Do we have anybody else who would like to, all right?
Hi, I'm Julia Mander, I live at 7108 Fourth Avenue in Richfield, right down the block from Presbyterian Church. And my neighbors and I, some of which couldn't be here tonight, are very concerned about the increased traffic on Fourth Avenue. Several years ago, when they opened up the daycare, et cetera, I went to a city council meeting and asked about the increased amount of traffic, et cetera, and, and the church representative and the person who's running the daycare assured me that, oh, their people were going to come and go off of Portland Avenue. And I said, well, you can't guarantee that, because the turnaround for the elementary school is right there, and, and that's where they go. And I don't, and I don't blame them. But if you lived on my block since that daycare has opened there, and I know that that's a financial gain for Hope, just like this would be a financial gain for Hope. And so I'm not sure that offsets the fact that we have already a huge amount of increased traffic, and you would be surprised to know, because now that I'm retired, I'm outside a lot more, that many of the times, the speeders on Fourth Avenue are the parents rushing to and from daycare in the morning to get there, and at the night to pick up their kids. And so I'm concerned that 70 to 100 kids ages 16 to 21, you can't guarantee, oh, they're going to carpool, or we're going to bust them. We could have 70 to 100 more cars every single day, twice a day, coming down our road again. And it is a safety issue, I mean, we have kids, we have dogs, we have elderly people, you know, on our streets, and we're really concerned about more traffic, and we really would not like to see this at Hope. And, and we feel like it needs more, there needs to be more thought into it by you, by the Planning Commission, rather than just what you may hear tonight. And I hope that you will take that into consideration, because the citizens that live along Fourth Avenue are greatly impacted to the negative. And so, does that offset bringing this program into Hope when maybe the program could find another place to go? And I agree with the previous speaker, that, you know, I was an elementary school teacher, and I know what those elementary school buildings and classrooms are, and they're small. And I'm not sure, but that really is the best, the best place in that regard also. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else like to get up and speak? Okay, well, do we have, do we have any questions? Public hearing? Are you sure nobody else wants to get up and speak? There's a lot of people here. Okay. I just want to make sure everybody, okay. Okay, great, so would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I will move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the public hearing is now closed, and so, do you guys have any thoughts on this?
Madam Chair, this is, you know, I'm looking at the site map, and, and, you know, you make, you make legitimate concerns regarding Fourth Avenue, because on the site map, it's listed as the drop-off zone. I'm not sure if any consideration has been granted to moving that drop-off zone to the other side of the building. I'm not sure if that's feasible. I'm not sure if that would alleviate your concerns, because the parking that's designated for this particular portion of the, of the building is, is off of Fourth Street. But I mean, those, those that don't drive wouldn't be impacted, the buses or whatever.
Right, but then there's more buses also. It's just more and more and more.
Should we have, if, if we're going to do back-and-forth questions, should we have, that's right. Sorry.
Well, those are my thoughts. You know, obviously, you bring a concern, and I think that, you know, from our purview, this is a building that's been used as a facility like this in the past, and for a conditional use permit, we're looking to make sure that there isn't, you know, that's not being used as a, as something not intended, or that the disruption will be so much that, that it causes adverse impacts, but it's hard to say that this, you know, the building as is, isn't, wouldn't be used as it was built for. Those are my, that's just what my thoughts are right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I just have a comment. Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to agree, to some degree, with you on this, you know, I think the hard thing is, you know, we can't necessarily, you know, dictate what happens inside in terms of programming, what the church decides to choose in terms of tenants. We can, we, to some degree. And so, we can, we can discuss traffic concerns, I think, I don't know if we can conditionally add. I, I don't know where this, where we stop this, though, you know, like, we can't necessarily say you have to close off Fourth Street, the entrance there, in order for us to be able to achieve this conditional use permit. I, I think it's, it's a programming issue in my mind, that seems to be something that needs to be discussed and worked out with the church itself, and whether it's appropriate. And same with the, you know, moving the Montessori versus having them co-located with 16- to 21-year-olds, like, I just, I don't know if that's necessarily our purview. So that's kind of my comment on that.
Were you going to say something? Well, I'm just sitting there agreeing, because we are pretty restricted in what we can do, and we have to be pretty much more objective into the types of things that both of you have talked about, and they, these would be issues that should come up with the church, and the communications and things like that, needs to be talked to with the church, and then with, ultimately with the school that's going to be operating. We are, we have to make sure that it falls within the purview of what we are responsible for, and responsible for making sure that it is, the usage is compliant with our overall plan. So, at this point, we really don't have anything on there, other than anything that we can subjectively make any kind of decision on, so I'm going to have to support this.
I guess, what my thoughts were on this, and I have raised this with staff and with a member of the school board, was that I feel like there's a lot to be worked out between the church and the school before it should have come to the Planning Commission, or that this is jumping the gun, and I know that there is timing from when they submit their plans to when it has to be approved. But I also have heard concerns from community members, I did receive an email today, that, from a member of the community, which will be in the minutes of the meeting, and it will get forwarded on to the school board, but that Hope Church, while they have done amazing things for Richfield community in terms of providing the Montessori, and hosting the loaves and fishes meals, and just being a great community space, they have very clear language on their website of their stance on gay marriage, and what is sexually appropriate relationships in their eyes. And so, I know when the folks that have gone to, they are, have gone to, who've left high school and gone to these alternative programs, a lot of times it's for budget issues, but it's also for issues because they were bullied in the traditional high school setting. And so, those are concerns that I have, and those are not Planning Commission concerns, those are school board concerns, and those haven't been worked out yet at all. So those are the reasons why I have issues with it being on-site there for this age bracket, and, but like I said, it's like we're being put in a little bit of a hard spot, because that, those aren't zoning concerns. And so, I don't know, I know we have members of the school staff here, and I don't know how those concerns have been addressed at all, so... Yeah, you can come on up to the podium and sign in, and...
The public meeting is now closed?
Can't do it.
We can't do that?
The, Chair Holberg, the applicant is able to speak outside of the public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lidrian Robey, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Richfield Public Schools, and I'll allow everybody else to introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Kasia Willhite, I am the Director of RSEP.
I'm Keith Kinnick, I'm the Director of Facilities and Administration at Hope Church.
I took a few notes during both presentations from community members, and I just want to hopefully address some of those questions that were raised around the RSEP program. It is for students between the ages of 16 to 21 who have not been successful in traditional high school, and our goal is to educate students in our community, to help them reach their goal of obtaining a high school diploma, as well as post-secondary opportunities. We have 70 students enrolled, but because it is a college experience program, there are never 70 students at the same time on campus, and so students come in and out, depending on their schedules, and they do online and blended learning opportunities. So even though on paper we have 70 students, there are not 70 students ever at, at the same time. As far as, and Keith will kind of speak to kind of some of the safety and security things, but the program's the way that the church is set up, and it was formerly, if I understand appropriately, was formerly Portland Elementary School, many, many years ago, and there's a courtyard that kind of separates, and we're able to cordon off what would be the RSEP program from the Montessori and the daycare program, so that students would have a separate entrance. Many of our students, because they would fall under the guidelines of Richfield Public Schools, there is a walking zone area, so if you live within two miles of the campus, as if you were going to the high school, you would be expected to walk, and many of our students either walk, will take the city bus, or some do drive, but we don't have a lot of student drivers. Dr. Willhite was just saying that 47 of the 70 students are Richfield High School students.
This has been thought through very much, so, as far as Montessori, Montessori leases from us, so if we want to move them to the other side, I've worked very hard to keep Montessori in the building, instead of saying you have to leave. We are remodeling the east side of the school building and getting it ready for Montessori. We've had the state inspector in, we are all set to go to move Montessori in there, there's no issues with it at all. The security has already been taken place. I'm going to move security doors. The Richfield program will be on the west side, and they'll be in a secured area, and our kids, we have programs there too, the before and after-school age program, and our preschool, that will be in the same area as the Montessori, but we want to keep our kids separate too, and safe, and so that has all been thought through, and that is not an issue at all. As far as traffic, the Montessori, we will have them drop off on the other side at entry seven, which on the very- which is on the very south end. And our preschool drops off at nine o'clock and eleven o'clock. Montessori is already here, already in the building at six to six-thirty to seven o'clock. So, we won't have any issues with traffic on the Portland side. So, that will relieve a lot of traffic on Fourth Avenue because they're gonna be on the Portland side dropping off their kids. And the only entrance that will be used on the Fourth Avenue side will be the Richfield School District. And as she said, most of them will walk or bike or, uh, other transportation. So, we don't see a lot of car traffic at all over on Fourth Ave.
How many students are in your Montessori program right now?
Uh, there is sixty, I think.
Okay.
I have a question. So, did you say that the Montessori drop-off is currently Fourth Avenue, but it's going to be moved?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Let me move, move to the Portland side and dropping off on that side.
Yeah, so we're just gonna be...
That, that was not, that...
Throw back the thing.
You can...
Yeah, at this point, the public hearing is closed. And so, um, as soon as we're done like asking our questions from the applicant, then I can ask staff kind of how we wanna address the further questions, but right now, the public hearing is closed. Well, we're going by Robert's Rules of Order. So, this is kinda how the process goes. Um, but I can maybe look to staff to, but like, we really, uh, we're not supposed to have like the back and forth talk like this. So, maybe I can look...
Yeah.
Can I respond?
I think you can certainly, you know, Hope Church is your, they are your neighbors and they will continue to be your neighbors. You can, you can have those conversations offline. Um, but in this, you know, in this context, the, the public, the public hearing is closed. There, there is no cross-talk, um, back and forth.
Keith, can I respond to the Fourth Avenue drop-off? Um, years ago, this came to the planning commission and we said we were gonna drop off on Fourth. I'm not sure where you got Portland. That was part of our request. It was always Fourth Avenue.
So, the other thing I would like to recommend of people who do have more input that they would like the city council to have is that all of this should be put in writing, um, your concerns personally to the city council, um, uh, on these issues. And all of those issues can just be written out and then will be part of the public record. And they'll have time to go through it all in that way as well. So, the, I guess the one issue that I don't feel was addressed, and this is kind of the thing that was brought up in the letter that was written to me, was the issue of, um, inclusion and the strong language on the Hope Church website regarding, um, gay marriage and the stance that that church, that church takes and has put in public. Um, and how that kind of corresponds with Richfield Public Schools. And, um, so I do feel like this is an issue that should be brought before the school board to, to be discussed. Um, 'cause I do think it's really important and it's not a planning issue. And so, I guess I just feel that like that still wasn't really addressed here in your answers, but that is one of my concerns. And so, I'm just saying what the letter had said to me. Are there any further questions for the applicants?
I, I have no questions other than I do wanna go back to the group that's here, the neighbors. And I, you know, I wanna, I want you to understand that, 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 uh, you know, part of our process is understanding the impacts that could, that could occur, um, from approval of this, of this request. And, um, I guess the information received and, and, and primarily the fact that the, the Montessori will be moved to, to Portland, um, I think mitigates that in my opinion. Now, I know that maybe in the past, that hasn't been, um, performed as, as, as desired. But I have no reason to believe that it won't, um, at this time. So, that's, I just wanted to let you know that that's where I, I stand on that. And I, I do appreciate you coming here and, and relaying those concerns. Um, I think that there would be, um, a, a different discussion if there wasn't a plan to address the traffic. And I think that there is.
Okay, well, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Um, I guess my one question for staff is, what are your thoughts on the timing of how this came before the planning commission, before the school board and the timing of opening and all that sort of thing?
I'm not, Chair Holberg, I'm just trying to understand the question.
I guess the timing of, um, it seems like there's a lot of stuff left up in the air with the school board. Um, maybe addressing some of the concerns that have been brought to them. And so, it's maybe like we're jumping ahead of the school board's timing. I don't know. Like, I'm wondering why this is on the agenda before it's got, had a chance to be kind of flushed out of the school board.
Uh, Chair Holberg, that, you know, I think those are, those are legally two separate questions. What's, what, the application that's before you tonight is a land use application. Is this location appropriate for, for this school with this enrollment? Um, you know, the, the question of, is this an appropriate location for Richfield Public Schools to enter into a lease is a question, is a completely separate question for the school board. Um, that the issues really aren't synced up or related, I guess, in terms of timing. Um, for you, I think my, my advice is you really have to separate the question, you know, the, the, the application in front of you. The city does have a, um, you know, a legally mandated timeline to make a decision on that land use application. But those, those other can, I don't, I don't know the status of the, whether a lease has been signed between, um, the, the property owner here and, and the school board, but those questions would be best addressed by the school board.
Okay, thank you again for clarifying that. I appreciate it. All right, so, um, would anybody here like to make a motion?
I motion to recommend approval of a resolution for a conditional use permit to allow a public school at seventy-one thirty-two Portland Avenue.
I'll second.
All in, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to reiterate that I hope the church sticks to the plan to have the Montessori drop-off moved to Portland as they said. Thanks.
I, I do have one discussion item as well. Um, you know, I, I very much feel for neighbors who feel like their traffic, their circulation, everything is impacted. I'm about to vote for an hundred-eighty-unit complex right across from my house, literally, at the next hearing item. Not typically a fan of these myself, but at the same time, it's, you know, it's one of those things where it's, we kinda have to, again, like I said before, you know, we, we have to consider what was before us in terms of the conditional land use permit um, versus all these other programmatic issues that really are something that I feel like the, the homeowners should be taking up with the church themselves and having a, you know, a good positive dialogue that way. And I really hope to see that both from the church and from the landowners. Um, that, that's the best I can offer at this point, 'cause that's the best I was able to do in my situation as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Uh, any nays? Nay. Okay, the motion passes. And then we can move on to the next agenda item. All right, our next agenda item is a public hearing to consider amending a final development plan for a planned unit development at sixty-five forty Penn Avenue. Staff?
Uh, development plans for the Novo apartments at Sixty-Sixth Street and Queen Avenue were approved by the city council in December of twenty-eighteen. The Novo development site includes a narrow strip of land along Sixty-Sixth Street that is currently part of the adjacent, uh, CVS property at sixty-five forty Penn Avenue. This, uh, panhandle-shaped portion of the CVS site must be subdivided and attached, uh, to the overall Novo development site before construction may commence. Uh, Bogart Peterson and Associates, the applicant, has submitted an application to amend the original land use approvals for the CVS property in order to complete that land transaction. Uh, site plans and photos attached to this report depict the, the panhandle portion in relation to the CVS and Novo sites. Removal of the panhandle, uh, removal of the panhandle from the CVS site will reduce the lot area of that property from the current one-point-five acres to one-point-three-five acres. This site modification will cause the impervious surface ratio to increase, uh, from the current eighty-one-point-three percent to approximately ninety, ninety percent, um, as the panhandle portion of the site is, is nearly all pervis, pervious area. Uh, the, the maximum impervious coverage permitted in this zoning district is eighty percent. Um, so what, while the non-conformity of the CVS site itself will be increased, the, the Novo site as approved will have, uh, impervious coverage well below the maximum. Or stated another way, they will have more, um, pervious surface than is required. Um, when calcul, when the two sites are cal, calculated cumulatively, uh, the combined CVS and Novo sites will have impervious coverage below the eighty percent maximum, making that, uh, the increase in non-conformity on the CVS site, uh, tolerable. Uh, no physical changes are proposed to the CVS site, uh, building or any of the pervious or landscaping areas outside of that panhandle portion. Um, if not for that increase in non-conformity, this application actually could've, it could've been removed, reviewed, uh, administratively as a minor amendment. Um, finding that the proposal meets requirements, staff's recommending approval of an amended final development plan for the, uh, CVS planned unit development at sixty-five forty Penn Avenue. Uh, we have the applicant here if, uh, there are any questions. Thank you.
So, we are opening up with a public hearing?
All right, let me just say I...
Could you introduce yourself?
Uh, my name is, uh, Lucy Peterson, um...
And sign in there, it is one. Thank you.
Was that a, was that a timer? That'd be cool if it was. Um, and like I said, my name is Lucy Peterson and, uh, pronouns she, her and hers. And I live, I got a little notice, and I live at, uh, Fraser Sheridan Court, which is just to the west of the picture of the red borders. It's the adjacent property to the west. And so, I know, uh, this is a hearing about the panhandle and all that, but, um, I just like to come every time I get a postcard because, just to remind everyone that there are thirty people. Um, yeah. Thirty-unit disability housing and that, uh, other than these postcards occasionally about, uh, city meetings, I'm just wondering what other plans there are to keep the residents, uh, and staff of my building in the loop about what's going on. What, uh, what, um, what, uh, plans there are in the future about a groundbreaking ceremony for the Novo site and, uh, and if there's going to be a groundbreaking ceremony and how are people going to be informed of that and, um, invited? 'Cause this is all new to me. I've never, I've never been involved with something like this, uh, right across the border from where I live. And so, yeah, I just, I just wanna keep people in mind that, uh, what my proposed idea, what I'd like to see is for, uh, Fraser Sheridan Court to be used in a pilot program or in, uh, as a guinea pig, um, casually. Because, uh, I think going forward, we could do a lot better when building something as big as Novo right next to, um, disability housing. And so, the idea of keeping, um, the city, the developer and the tenants of special housing, and by that I mean disability, low income or elderly mostly, keeping us, uh, in the loop as far as, uh, dates for things like the groundbreaking and, um, just possibly having the developer come to our building once or twice a year, preferably more, to kinda just give us an update on how the, uh, construction is going, 'cause we're gonna have to live with it for several years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Lucy, may I ask? Um, is this, is this mostly in relation to, um, just being notified for the, the well-being of the tenants in terms of noise, dust and traffic in general? Or is it just to generally be informed about everything in the goings-on of the, the process? Is there any special concerns in terms of those issues?
Um, no, I, uh,
Okay.
I, everything and anything that it's, uh, um, that, to just elaborate real quick on what I mean is, uh, that's... That I've never heard of, never seen, uh, example of, of a developer working close, so closely with a neighbor of, that they're building something so large next to disabled housing where they'll come in and say, this is, uh, what the timeline is. This is how you're going to be affected. And, um, to the point where they give some sort of presentation to us in our community room. Um, or have some sort of casual, uh, meeting with us at our property in our community room where we have a chance to ask them questions. Because, um, I've been here for all three of these, um, meetings that have, uh, come up for this, uh, issue. And, um, I'm, I'm just speaking for me personally because, uh, I have the ability to be here for this stuff. But I know that all thirty of my other neighbors got the same postcard. And so, um, if they were able to come here, I think they would. And so, I'm not speaking on their behalf. I'm just saying that it's easiest for me to be here. And, um, that some of them don't even know the questions to ask or know how to, how to attend or speak up at a meeting like this. And so, um, that's my concern, that, that reaching out to us. I know it's going, I'm asking to, um, going way above and beyond what's normally done. But what I'm really saying is I'm simply proposing an idea. That's, that's all I'm, I'm just, I'm not really asking for anything. I'm just proposing the idea that, um, developer work, uh, closer with us and, and realize that the traditional ways of informing...
You know...
Jim, did you have something?
Yeah, you know, I, I really, I really, I think I understand what he's saying. And, and, you know, maybe the developer could go above the extra mile, um, uh, there's, I really can appreciate that. You wanna approach, you know, I know, living across from a development that's being built right now in the Chamberlain, um, how, how intrusive that... built right now in the Chamberlain, how intrusive that is, and, you know, for, you know, whether, you know, for these residents, you know, it may, you know, and I, I really thank your courage to coming forward and being at the meetings and taking the time to speak, you know, you know, a lot of people don't have that courage, and, you know, maybe, you know, maybe there is a chance to go a little bit more. You know, I know you've been in pretty good communication from what I understand.
Actually, to be truthful, we have not been, and so I think I was going to elaborate upon that.
All right. Well, you know, I, I think, I think communication with the neighbors during a development, especially development this size, you know, the Chamberlain's probably fairly close in size, you know, is going to be the key to your success as well, and maybe, maybe you can set up separate sessions, one with, with this residency as well.
So, could you introduce yourself and sign in as well? Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Todd Olin, I'm with Bogart and Peterson. I'm here on behalf of the Blair Wolfson Family Trust tonight, but I also, as you know, work with the Broadway Investors that are doing the Novo apartment complex. The suggestions that Lucy, correct, okay, that Lucy brought up, I think are a wonderful idea. They are things that we've done in the past, and coordinative efforts, not only with that community, but with the surrounding neighbors, we've done it in the past, and it was very successful, actually. We had bi-weekly meetings to just say, okay, the next couple of weeks, this is what we're, the activities that are going to be going on, you know, you're going to see concrete block, you're going to be, see these things, there is impacts by these projects, we can't deny it, but we can certainly prepare the neighbors better for it, so, and I think that's a wonderful idea.
So you'd be willing to do one onsite at the Frazier building?
Certainly.
That would be amazing.
We are working with the owner of the Frazier complex.
Maybe just like an open house that is inside the building versus the community one, I think, would be awesome to, if you could agree to that.
You're suggesting doing a couple, one on the Frazier, and maybe one with other neighbors? Or all together?
I mean, they could be jointly addressed, but I think it's, it's key that, you know, items that would impact Frazier in particular, I think would be very helpful for Frazier residents, and I'm, you know, I'm fine, and I'm sure all the neighbors are fine in the area too, with being, you know, present as a part of that, because I think we've, we felt very disconnected since the approval last, what was it, November, I believe it was? And so just, you know, I think everybody's kind of chomping at the bit to figure out, you know, what the timeline is, what's happening next, one of the houses getting demoed, things like that, and so it'd be really nice to just see that, even if it was a flyer for now, just to apprise all the neighbors of what's going to happen, and when we might be able to expect some, you know, good faith meeting or something like that. I think that would be great.
I, I would agree. There's been kind of a dead time here that's not typical, I will say, and that's just been closing on the property, the individual properties, and so it's my understanding, though, at this point, with the exception of the CVS that's hinging on this hearing, there's one, I believe, that just closed last week, and that was the last of the seven. So there was, you know, there was some time there to get the title work and the agreements and all the closings done, but, which is not, I would say, typical, so I apologize for having a dead airspace here between the approval in December and now, but, but what you can expect is that the plan is that we're, we're working with Frazier now on the easement issues between, for the Russell extension, and because of the financing and backing with HUD and whatnot, we're getting all the approvals we need on their behalf to get the signatures for the easements, and then everything else is a go, so we're actually looking at a September start.
Okay.
Madam Chair, have a comment? We voted on this in November, and I remember Lucy, your testimony, or whatever you call it, was so powerful, and it is tonight too, and you swayed me, and I, I hope you pursue your idea of maybe special considerations being considered when there is, there's a large building going in by a disabled unit. I think that's a great idea, and maybe you're, I don't know how you do that, but don't let that idea go. Pardon me?
You are.
Okay, maybe with your council person might be a starting point. And then the vote was in November, and at that time, the developers, not you, but I don't remember who said it, they, they, this came up, and they said they were going to communicate with Frazier residents because of the issues Lucy brought up. So it's been six months, so it sounds like there hasn't been any communication with residents. Is that true?
Not that I'm aware of.
So this already came up, and the, you know, so let's do it. The developers said they would communicate more with the disabled, not just the owners, the Frazier owners, but the residents. They said they would do that, and it hasn't happened yet.
And I will go on record as saying that I'm apologizing for that, because we are communicating with the owner, and assuming, and we all know how that breaks down, but assuming that the information was being passed along to residents, and it's not, so we will take advantage, or, you know, go the extra step and just go directly to the residents. Of course, the owner has to approve that, and frankly, I'd be more comfortable going through the owner to plan the, with the facility, and be there, and have them properly notified that they all know it's coming, and things of that nature. So I will, I will take that responsibility, and I apologize for the, the black hole that happened.
Thank you. So I think since there's nobody else here to do the public testimony, maybe we could close that and then open it up for discussion? So does, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is closed, and so let's open it up for some more discussion.
So I've got a question for Matt, you know, would, you know, it sounds like the developer would be, you know, in agreement to do some additional meetings, you know, can we have a recommendation? Do you think it would be appropriate to the council to kind of require these things, for staff to follow up on to make sure they happen? I just want to make sure that, you know, even though we may agree, all agree on this here, that, you know, it does happen, because I do know how important communication is with the neighbors, especially, you know, you know, we've got, you know, a lot of different types of people that we really need to communicate with.
Yep, I, I appreciate everything that's been said, there was great testimony to hear. Like the applicant said, you know, it is kind of in that awkward lull phase right now between a project approval and before anything has taken place, so if there, if there were updates to be given at this stage, there would kind of be no, no news at this point. But yes, we certainly would like to hear that, that they are working with, with the Frazier ownership as well as the residents there. In terms of your question about putting a recommendation or a stipulation on this, I, I don't think that would be germane to this application, because this is, this, the application in front of you tonight is specifically dealing with that CVS property, it's not the, the Novo. There is going to be one more council approval that takes place about two weeks from now, on June 11th, the council will be considering a preliminary plat of the properties. So the, the council will be approving a few things two weeks from now, and we can, we can certainly look into adding any stipulations there if, if, if the council feels that's necessary, but in, absent of that, you know, we would certainly, we would certainly encourage the developer to have those conversations, and, and based on the relationship that we've had with Broadway Investors, with the developer, you know, they've not been shy about giving out their, their personal contact information, their phone numbers, email addresses. To my understanding, they've, they've made themselves available, and we certainly hope that they continue to do so as this moves forward.
Any other discussion? Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of an amended final development plan for the planned unit development at 6540 Penn Avenue.
Uh, second, any seconds?
Second.
All in favor, or any discussion? Let's open it up for discussion before we do that. All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes.
Commissioner Holberg, one last thing, just for the record, is there any status update on what was agreed to under the vote in November, where some of the, some certain houses would be, actually be inspected prior to construction? Is that still kind of on the timeline as well? We haven't heard anything, nobody's heard anything in the area about that, and so we're just kind of curious how that process starts, and I can talk to you afterward, but I just kind of wanted that.
No, no, that's a good question, and yes, we did agree to do a preliminary or pre-construction survey of the, that's what you're referring to, is a pre-construction survey of the houses around the perimeter, and yes, that's still on the plan.
Okay.
That's obviously got to happen before we start any construction, so again, that last closing happened last week, so it's kind of kicked this into high gear again, to get everything back on track, to get under construction, but that will happen, and then, you know, what I think, and I'm just going by memory here, so bear with me, but the discussion was, you know, vibration or impacts or what have you, for any of the neighbor houses, we wanted to do a pre-construction assessment, and then make sure nothing happened. If something does, of course, then we would deal those on a case-by-case.
Correct. Thank you. I was just making sure that was on the docket, so, thanks.
While you're there, while you're there, do you have a groundbreaking estimate?
We, all I've been told is that it's a beginning of September start, which typically the groundbreaking will be usually a couple of weeks ahead of that. The, the start means actual start, so we'll do a groundbreaking and invite to everybody on this board, on this commission, and city council, and, you know, everybody involved in it, so, you know, to have food and drinks, maybe, so.
Chair Holberg, Commissioner Penn, I just want to, on that last question about the, the pre-construction surveys, just to clarify how that would work process-wise, so in a, in the upcoming months, when the applicant does submit a build, building permit applications and their full construction plans, at the staff level, we do a, a review with, with the chief building official to make sure that any, any sort of special conditions like that that were placed upon the resolution, we review those, and they, they go in a, they go in a development review letter written by the chief building official to the general contractor, and we do, we would not release building permits until those conditions are satisfied, so those, those precondition, those pre-construction surveys of those abutting properties would have to be complete before a building permit would be issued.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda is the liaison report, so Community Service and Advisory Council?
Actually, I have a report. I'm just going to do it this way, it's a, there's no televised meetings or anything like that, and I can't make the meeting typically, so I'm just going off the April minutes, essentially, so if some of this is old news, please let me know. But Dog Park update, I think, is a fascinating one, so they are going to postpone that until 2020, and staff suggested dedicating an existing ice rink area at Roosevelt Park that's surrounded by boards for off-leash park, and they're kind of just going to call this a, a pilot for the real, like a dry run for the real dog park, and see how it all works out anyway, so that's happening. Staff is working on providing recycling containers and pickup service in parks for recycling system in the parks themselves, and there's working on the type of receptacles and the possibility of fewer receptacles, which would create more concern about littering, so staff would work to get the word out about those locations. And then there's some capital improvement plan and budget revisions. One big thing was the, what like Nature Center, if you guys haven't noticed, the, the floating bridge washed out after some huge rains, so they applied for a grant to the DNR to actually repair that, and so that whole process is underway, but just judging by how long it's going to take to build a floating bridge across the lake, we probably won't see that thing until fall at least, and if DNR ever gets that money over to us as well, so we'll see how that works out.
Next up is City Council.
Well, I don't have any report for the City Council, but I just wanted to note that the bandshells opening will be June 9th at 6:00 PM, it's a Sunday, and there will be a couple of bands playing, and we're going to have some ribbon cutting, and the garden will be planted. We have a Gertrude Elrich Memorial Garden there, and you can still buy bricks, so you can have your name imprinted and planted in there in front. So, no, really, we've all worked very hard on the bandshell committee, and it's coming together, we're really excited, so.
Where is the bandshell?
It's in Veterans Park, yes.
How much do the bricks cost? The bricks?
Well, the, the smaller ones were 150, are 150, and then the larger ones are right around, I think they're 250.
Okay.
But have your name on there, and for perpetuity, someone can always come and say, yeah, these people supported that bandshell.
What's the, what's the schedule for the Fourth of July in the bandshell? Because I saw that the, the different dates of all the bands and stuff, they're going to be there, but then Fourth of July was kind of open.
You know, I don't, and they might be going to use it for some, some of their programming, and so they just purposely didn't schedule it during that time.
Right.
But the usual Thursday night, I think it was Thursday night, the concerts that generally had been in an Augsburg Park are going to be now at the bandshell. But apparently, there's lots of scheduling going on, there's weddings and all sorts of things, so I think it'll be used.
Thank you. Next up is HRA.
Um, one small, well, one item is that the HRA had a large, largely attended public hearing about the private development with MWF properties for 55 units of affordable workforce housing at the Old City Garage South site. That was from the chair herself.
Thank you. The school board.
No report.
All right, thank you. Transportation Commission, that's normally Sean, Commissioner O'Leary, he's not here. The Chamber of Commerce.
Um, no report, other than I've come to the conclusion it'll be hard for me to make meetings, and so I requested minutes, but I did not get them in time for this meeting, so.
Next time. Great, thank you.
And that's probably how I'll deliver my reports to this committee, is through the meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the City Planner Reports.
Yeah, there's a couple items of interest, both of which are, are taking place simultaneously tomorrow night, you'll have to choose which, which is more, more in, in line with your interests, the, over here on the east side, there's a meeting for, there's a neighborhood meeting about the Chamberlain development, which the, the first building is nearing completion. I believe that was, the nearby neighbors were invited to that, there will be a staff, city staff person at that as well. That is from 4:30 to 6:30, and then also taking place tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, is the, the first of two open house meetings regarding the Southdale Library. Their, the plans have changed a little bit, if you haven't been following the Southdale Library process closely, as of, as of a year or two ago, when they started up the process, they were looking at replacing, constructing a new library on a portion of the current site, they're now looking at taking the old Herberger's, or demoing and rebuilding on the site of the old Herberger's building on the Southdale Mall property. So that's kind of a big change, and does affect the, the Richfield users of that library, who, you know, currently have a much easier way of walking and biking from West Richfield directly into that library site, whereas now, you have to, would have to travel not only across busy York Avenue, but across the Southdale parking lot. So there are, there are two open house meetings on that topic. The first is tomorrow night, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, the second one is, if you can't make that one, there's another one, June 8th, 10:00 AM to noon, and let me see if I have, I have the flyer open here. It says the location of the meeting. I, I actually, you know, the, yes, the, the meeting is at the, the current building on the, the former service center side, so not in the library, but the opposite side of the building, so please attend those if, if that interests you.
Do you have a sense of how far along that process is? I mean, are we still in the stage where we could functionally make a change to the location, or is it to the point where?
I think we're done. I think the commissioners have pretty much made a decision.
It does seem that the, my, my understanding was that the county, the county board made, has made a decision to locate it at Southdale. They would, they would enter, what I've read is that they would enter into a long-term lease with Simon Properties, the owner of the mall, to lease that new building on that property. I can't say to whether it's a 100% done deal, but it sounds like that is the location that the county board has chosen.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. Anything else? No? Well, it looks like there's a little bit of sun- Well, it looks like there's a little bit of sunlight left, and the next meeting time, um, is Monday, June twenty-fourth at seven PM, and I'll be here in the council chambers. So, if anything else, I'd say we are adjourned. All right.
We do need a, a motion to adjourn, please.
And let's, does anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Anyone like to second it? Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, this, meeting adjourned, thank you all.